Good evening, everyone. Nice to see all of your smiling faces in here this evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, November 12th, 2024 work session of the McMinnville City Council. I would like to call this meeting to order and hand the mic over to our Parks and Recreation Director, Susan Muir, for presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. I'm here tonight to give you an update about the Culture, Parks and Recreation Bond. Tonight's work session is really designed to give the public and the council an idea and really a rough estimate, and we're going to talk about the poll on the general fund and the fees that we have forecasted for the estimated or forecasted and estimated for the proposed new recreation center. Tonight, so I'm going to cover a brief history of the project and finances. I'm going to give a little city budget context to the conversation. I'm going to talk about what we will get. I'll present the estimated operating budget to you. We'll do a market comparison and options, and then I'm going to talk a little bit about the policy decisions that council will need to make and the timing. And before I go any further, I want to mention that Ken Ballard is on the line. He is beaming in from snowy Colorado. He is the consultant that did the first estimated operating costs back in 2019. Hi, Ken.
Yes.
And he's available here. He helped us put this operating budget together, and he is here if any questions come up. So I wanted to make sure you know he's here. So let me start with just a brief history of the project and the finances. I want to encourage everybody to go to iHeartMac.org. That's where we've posted all of the information about the project. I looked today, and we have over 350 people following that project on iHeartMac.org, so that's great. Yeah, thank you to those of you that have signed up. On that webpage, you'll see the project background. You'll learn about the Community Advisory Group, formerly known as MACPAC. We have put the final Parks and Recreation Open Space Plan on there. We've put all the background about the locational conversations that we've had. We have the history of recreation facilities in McMinnville posted there. We've included the opportunities and the results of the community feedback that we've received to date. We have some FAQs on there and then a way to get ahold of us as the project management team. So I want to encourage everybody to go there for the background or give me a call. There's also handouts at the back of the room related to the project, so feel free to grab a pamphlet if you'd like to. So the project finances are the other really big thing that we've spent a lot of time talking about, and I want to get us grounded on exactly what I'm going to be talking about. So we've spent a lot of our time talking about capital costs. Those are the one-time costs. They could be acquisition of land, what we would purchase to put the rec center on. It would include the design and architectural drawings of the proposed rec center, and then it would include capital construction, so building the thing. Those are capital costs. They're one-time. They're typically funded by general obligation bonds, grants, and capital fundraising. And just as a reminder, general obligation bonds must be approved by voters. So those are the capital costs. Here's what's included in our estimated capital cost, and right now it's $152.5 million for this project. To get to that number, we used what we call the MACPAC concept plans and estimated the capital costs. The rec center was estimated at $115 million. The library was estimated at $25 million. The senior center was estimated at $3.5 million. And then after that presentation was made from MACPAC, we also embarked on the Parks and Recreation Open Space Plan. And through that, we know the five-year project list is an additional $9 million. So that's how we got to the capital cost of $152.5 million. I want to talk next about operating costs. So these are the things that are ongoing costs. This is the staff. This is the lifeguards. This is the instructors that we have. It's the ongoing maintenance and repairs to a building that we would do, supplies and materials to operate, and even the heating and electricity. And typically, those costs, the operating costs, are funded by user fees, a city's general fund, and also donations. So those are the two different types of foundational costs that we're looking at. I want to talk about the four elements of the plan again and let you know for some of these, we are not anticipating any additional operating costs. So for the library, what we have planned right now, no anticipated additional operating costs. Same with the senior center. Based on the $3.5 million addition and upgrade, we have no anticipated additional operating costs at this time. Park operations, which would be the park maintenance group, that has a level of service and that you typically look at through your annual budgeting process, through ad packages and other different tools, and we are in a build-back phase with park maintenance. So that comes to you through the budget process. But what we're really going to be talking to you about tonight is the anticipated changes in operating costs for the proposed recreation center. So again, two types of costs, capital cost, that's $152.5 million, and then the operating costs. And again, we're going to be talking about operating costs tonight. So any questions on that background and history? I'm going to pause each point through the process, if that's okay, Mayor, and see if you all have any questions for me.
Any questions at this time? Thank you.
Okay, let's get to the city budget context. This is start, we're starting to get to the good stuff. So I thought we'd just paint a picture of what we're dealing with now. Oops. Right now, my screen is covering this up, so I'm going to read it from the screen. Right now, the total cost to operate the city, and this is from the proposed 24-25 budget, the total cost of operating the city is $131 million. The total cost to operate the general fund services is $37 million, and the total cost to operate the full Parks and Recreation Department is $3.9 million. And you can see there, we're about 12% of the city's overall general fund. So the other thing that we do in Parks and Recreation, like several other departments, is we have user fees or charges for services. And this, again, is straight from the 24-25 proposed budget. And you can see one of the sources of revenue that we have, charges for services, is really fees. And in this budget, we were estimating $3.2 million coming into the city as fees or charges for services. And so as part of that, Parks and Recreation brings in about $641,000 of that $3.2 million. This has changed a little bit over the last several years because of COVID. We're still building back a little bit. We shoot for a high, as high of cost recovery as we reasonably can, and right now, we're pulling in about that every year. So you may recall, and several people in the room may recall, that we put this project on hold for quite a while, and that was for several reasons, but most importantly, we had foundational budget issues that needed to be dealt with. What we knew is we wanted to build an operating budget that dealt with some of the issues that we're facing now, such as maintenance, long-term capital investments, and reserves for capital investment. So we knew a few years ago, the situation that the city's budget was in, it wasn't the right time to have that conversation. So we really wanted to make sure we had the operational funds. We wanted to make sure that we addressed maintenance and reserve planning and whatever we proposed. Like I mentioned, we're still recovering from the pandemic a little bit, and we also needed to have property and location conversations. You may remember at one point, the community members advised us, don't do anything without deciding the location. You really need to have that nailed down because that's the first question we're going to get. And thankfully, we are in a memorandum of understanding with MAC Water and Light for the property known as the Miller Property, so we're excited about that. More conversations on that to come. So the other thing that happened while the project was put on hold is the city's 2023 project that was called Dollars and Cents, and we had an online interface with the community where they could decide and weigh in on the project. And really, this was initially put together to consider how the city might choose to use the approximate $5 million coming in annually that was freed up by the voter-approved fire district. So that was back in 2023 when we were having that conversation. And just as a reminder, the community ranked Culture, Parks and Recreation as their top priority for the use of those funds. And then, as many of you know, the Budget Committee recommendation and City Council decision was to levy the first 50 cents of the full $1.50, which was estimated to bring in about 1.8 million. So we felt like, once that conversation happened, we could bring this project back to you for more conversation. So I'm just trying to lay the groundwork now about the city budget as we move into what the estimated operating costs are. Any questions?
Counselor Peralta?
I have a comment. Thank you, Mayor. Because it's standing room only, there's four seats up here in the front. If anybody who's standing in the back would like to either, and there's another row here if folks want to sit down.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. All right, moving on. This is the what will we get opportunity for us to talk about the overall project. I have an asterisk on this because City Council has not acted on what would go on a ballot for a capital bond, and we have not finalized construction costs. So this is what the concept plan said we will get through this process. And everybody's seen these amazing drawings that went through the MACPAC process of the new rec center. It's an exciting image and a lot of amenities inside. I asked the Parks and Recreation managers who've been involved in this for five years what they would say to people as they're trying to tell them what we would get out of this project, and you can see they came up with quite a few things. Most importantly, the ability for your Parks and Rec Department to focus on community health and wellness. As part of this operating plan, we will be open 25 more hours a week. We would have accessible restrooms. In fact, we would have an accessible building, something that we don't have right now. More privacy, which is something that we've heard a lot about. Family changing rooms. Drop-in childcare for users of the facility. One-stop shop for all of your recreation needs. There's people that drop kids off at our aquatic center, run kids over to Lynnfield's pool, run kids over to the community center for gymnastics, and then start the whole thing over again. So this would really be a one-stop shop for recreational needs. We think that'll be efficient and easier on families. Another question we get a lot is, why don't we have just one membership in Parks and Recreation? Because right now, we have an Aquatic Center membership and a Community Center membership, so we're looking forward to not having two. We have a lot, built in a lot of options to tailor user fees to fit different financial needs. So some people might buy an annual pass, and some people might just buy a day pass. So we've got a lot of different opportunities for people to experience the center. We anticipate having more publicly rentable gym space, more drop-in time, concurrent activities, so pickleball can play at the same time as basketball in the proposed building. Energy efficiency, we are really looking forward to creating a safe environment and incorporating the crime prevention through environmental design concepts. We know we want a facility that we can be proud of. We think it will be a lot easier to recruit staff if we had newer buildings. There's definitely an opportunity for more revenue, and you'll see that in some of the numbers I'm going to present. We also know we'll have more opportunity for competitive swim meets, more clinics and camps all year round. Something our gym really needs is better lighting. Like I said, we can do more tournaments for pickleball, basketball, or three-by-three. We would double the number of indoor pickleball courts that we currently have. We'd have an updated and safer tiny tots. Full-size basketball courts, we don't have a full-size basketball court in our facility, and we would have two in the new one. More parking, that's something we hear about a lot, particularly when there is senior fitness classes going on at the pool, and maybe more importantly, more parking for the library. We have set aside $150,000 a year in this operating budget towards capital reserves, something that we haven't done in the past, and we want to keep those best management practices going throughout this process. Near and dear to me, the facility is located away from the jail and other conflicting uses right near our community center. We would be adjoining one of our most amazing parks, and we'd be able to interface with the Yamhill River. We would have a safe drive-through drop-off, which we do not have at our facilities right now. Better cardio room and weight room. This one's for Katie. No rain-induced waterfalls inside our buildings. Currently, we have one deteriorating slide as our family pool amenity, and we know we'll have a lazy river and interactive elements as well. That playtime can go on at the same time as there are swim meets because there's a wall between the two pools, so that will be great. We also built in a dedicated maintenance person for the facility, which frees up time for programmers to do the work that they like to do, which is programming recreation. We think it'll be a regional destination, a local hub. There'll be all kinds of new recreation options. The pool, one of the pools is slated to have a zero-depth entry, which means you can walk into the water for better accessibility. Right now, the maximum number of lanes we have in our lap pool is eight at 25 yards, and we can have up to 20 lanes at 25 yards, or 10 lanes at 50 meters. We would have a modern pool system, an HVAC system, much improved on what we have now, and better air quality for chlorine sensitivities. And the birthday party rental opportunities in this place is going to be amazing. We're looking forward to reduced waiting lists. That's something that we know is very difficult for our community. We don't have the space. We don't have the, any way that we can get those waiting lists smaller. We'd have a working elevator, which is great, and again, we'd be able to focus on fitness and wellness. We'd have a functional training space, better cardio space and equipment, a community wing with meeting rooms, outdoor play spaces. Right now, at the community center, we use the parking lot to the rear of the building when we have camps for play. We'd have more space and options for older adults, value-based fees, secure front desk, and, most importantly, a sustainable financial plan. So that tees this up for the conversation of what is this going to cost the city to operate? But any questions about what we anticipate getting through the concept plan that we've been working on?
The one dedicated maintenance person, given the scope of different things that will be available to use, from pools to basketball courts, et cetera, is, obviously, you're presenting what you feel is a realistic option. How much time, and I know that our current facilities lack maintenance, how much time do you anticipate being spent regularly on maintenance, kind of with the perspective of what we do and don't do currently?
Yeah, that's a really good question, and I think probably Rob Porter and Katie Noid could answer that better than I. What I will say is it was important for us to have a dedicated maintenance person. With the changes that the council has made to the budget to bring in one citywide maintenance person, it's already made a big difference for us in our buildings, and we really appreciate Public Works and Gianni and what he does. But it's not enough to know the complex systems of a pool. We, a lot of these will be very specialty items that will need somebody that can learn those and begin to run those and manage them as efficiently as possible. Right now, we're anticipating 40 hours a week, but we also are working with Public Works on where that position might sit, and it could be a part of the larger maintenance team so that if larger projects are needed, maybe we shift city resources around. So we've been talking about that already. The other thing that we anticipate and we've built into the operating budget is janitorial staff and low-management maintenance people on all the time. So we'll have somebody in the building being able to fix things as it breaks, clean up issues if we have any, and just really be there to help the facility run smoother.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, now I'm going to move into the exciting part, the estimated operating budget. And again, I just want to thank Ken for bringing his national perspective and the years of experience he has in doing this. This is one of the pieces that we want to make sure we nail it on this, to make sure that we leave a good legacy of a financially sustainable building. So we had one, you might remember, in 2019 when we were on the second floor of the community center and you first heard the report about the facilities. We had a real rough estimate in there, but we knew we needed to update it, and we needed to do that for a few reasons. The public engagement process and the advisory committee work enhanced or expanded the amenities in the facility. We know this now. COVID added costs and affected attendance and participation, so we needed to account for that. Obviously, the economy looks very different today than it did back in 2019, and we've also had a pretty significant jump in personnel costs that we needed to account for. So how we looked at this to set it up, to get some of the numbers, we estimated the operating budget is built on what will be run out of the building. So if you look at our city budget, the cost centers are different right now. It's the Aquatic Center separately from the Community Center, which is separate from rec sports and the Senior Center. And the way Ken advised us to look at this is to combine the Community Center and Aquatic Center budgets, and then also the parts of rec sports that are run out of the building. So the indoor sports that we have leagues for is included in this. It was really difficult to get apples-to-apples on this, and partly it's because we're looking at an opening date in 2028. So what we've done is we've taken all of the current 2024 numbers and escalated them to 2028 when we needed to. And that was just to try and get apples-to-apples, so you can see what we're looking at. The assumptions that are built into the estimate, the first year of operations would be 2028, and that is ambitious, but we are shooting for it. We also assume that there, the presence of other providers in the market will remain the same, so in other words, there won't be a large facility like our new YMCA opening up in McMinnville during this time. All of these things, if they do change, we would need to relook at the numbers. We built this operating estimate on the 2021 concept plan that I talked about. We also know that a one-time startup budget will be necessary. We know that we're going to operate one of our buildings until one day when they close the doors, and then we're going to open up the new building the next day. And so there's going to be a part, a time there where we really need like two operating budgets, but that'll be one time. We'll incorporate that into a regular process, budget process, but that is not included in this. And then we made the assumption that the part-time wage scale in 2028 will be $17 an hour. We also know that there's a great opportunity for revenue in this new facility, and so we assume that we are going to have a high level of programming and also increased staffing needs, and like I said, we will pull in more revenue because of that. We know that the center will do what we currently do, which is pull from outside the city limits, and the basic capital replacement and reserve dollars are included, like I mentioned, the $150,000 and the maintenance person. And then no debt service for the capital funding has been shown, and that is just so, we don't know the answer to what that might look like, depending on how much we pull on the bonds, what the interest rates are, so those aren't typically included in these types of estimates. So like I mentioned, right now, we have five elements of the Parks and Recreation Department budget, admin, community center, aquatic center, rec sports, and senior center. That's the way you see it every year during the budget process. And this is more of a cost center or an estimated operating budget for the facility. So we've pulled parts of the, the full community center budget, the full aquatic center budget, and then, as I mentioned, a portion of rec sports that would be run out of the facility. Okay, so this is where we start to get into the actual numbers. So I mentioned that we're going to try and escalate everything to 2028 so that we have apples-to-apples. So right now, for those programs that I just described in the earlier slide, the community center, aquatic center, and a portion of rec sports, right now, 23-24 actual numbers. The expenses were $1.9 million. The revenues were $641,000, and the difference was $1.2 million. So that's our actual tested numbers that we know of. When we escalate those to 2028, we use the same escalation for everything, which was a 4% growth every year. We escalated that actual number, and we come up with $1.5 million if we were going to operate the same way we are now with the same programs and the same revenue. So that's just simply escalated, so we can try and get apples-to-apples. And that $1.5 million is what we call the poll on the general fund, so that's the additional money that the city, that the budget needs from the general fund to operate Parks and Recreation. Okay, now I want to point out that we have, the revenues now, only escalated to $750,000, and that's going to come up in a couple of slides. And then overall, I wanted you to see the other number, the difference of the poll on the general fund, like I said, is $1.5 million. Now what I'm going to do is insert the proposed numbers to the right. So estimated in the new facility, we anticipate the expenses will increase to $4.8 million. We anticipate the revenues would have the biggest increase at $2.6 million, with the difference being $2.1 million. So that, based on the staffing plan, the supplies and materials needed, the size of the building, that's the number that we're starting with. So right now, you're looking at, as best we can, apples-to-apples in $2028. So like I mentioned, I want to draw your attention to the big increase we plan for in revenue. And Ken can give you any market information you'd like about that. We think that's pretty realistic, but we would be going from $750,000 of revenue to $2.6 million of revenue. And then the difference in that, we would be going from $1.5 million to $2.1 million, and again, that's what we call the poll on the general fund. And the difference of that number, so this would be the new poll on the general fund for the proposed new rec center, would be an additional $613,000. And we think that that is the estimate that we get based on the best management practices of developing an operating plan that does have long-term maintenance considerations. It allows us to build a reserve, and it also allows us to highly program the space so we can increase our revenues. So questions about the estimated operating costs? This isn't a spreadsheet-level detail we're doing right now. What we're trying to do is give you the foundation to understand what we might be pulling on the general fund to take it to the next step.
Counselor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. Susan, do you have a, just, I realize you don't have a specific slide for it or maybe the detailed view, but do you have the main three or four bases for the revenue increase, that $2 million increase? Where is it coming from? Is it increased cost of fees, or is it, I mean, I'm sure it's a combination of increased costs and more services, but what I'm interested in is like, how much of it is tied to increasing fees?
Yeah, and I'm going to show you the proposed fees to support this, and that is in the next couple of slides. So good question. We have a lot, as I mentioned, we have a lot of different varieties of types of fees for people, so I'll answer that question in a couple of slides. Okay, now we're going to talk about market comparisons and options. Again, really trying to get apples-to-apples, we're going to start here with the proposed fees. So I want to, I want to remind council, you're not adopting fees tonight. You're not setting fees tonight. These are what comes out of what we think is the best management practices for operating a building that we have planned for in the Culture, Parks and Recreation. So you can see, there's daily fees for adults to family. We call it a punch card now, but a 10-visit pass, an annual pass, and month-to-month as well. So I'm going to dig into a couple of these and show you some examples of what those compare with today, and then also what it compares with other facilities in the region. So let's look at the two estimated fees of the adults month-to-month, which for a resident is $55.50, and then we're also going to look at a family annual pass, which is currently estimated to be $1,200 a year. The other thing I want to say is if somebody pays extra for a class, let's say an art class, they do not have to pay for admission into the building. They've paid for that with the admission to the art class. So there will be ways to sign up for the additional classes that have an additional fee. This is really built on those drop-in things that we currently do, walking on the track, using the cardio equipment, using the weights, free open swim. Those are what would be covered under these fees. Okay, so let's look at the adult fee right now. This currently, and this has escalated to 2028, like I said, we do not have one single membership, but if we mash the Aquatic Center and the Community Center memberships together right now, existing month-to-month is about $49.72 at both of our facilities. The new estimated month-to-month would be $55.50. So that's one example. The other example I want to look at is the family annual pass, and Ken nicely did a market study for us and pulled some of the information for a few buildings that are similar, and then we escalated those to 2028 again so that we could get apples-to-apples. So the facilities that we used, and there certainly can be different facilities that we could look at, but the Croc Center in Salem is one that we heard come up through the community. The Sherwood YMCA is one that I hear a lot about from folks. The Juniper Center in Bend, the Shaalam Aquatic and Rec Center, the Woodburn Facility, and then SHUT in Hillsborough, which is a more limited facility. But if we escalate their annual membership rates that we found online, those would be escalated to the numbers on the right side of the column. So the question, where does the proposed McMinnville rec center and fees land in there? And you can see, it lands at $1,200, which is pretty much right in the middle of those costs for the annual membership. So this is just to give you an idea and kind of have a market scan. I've been talking about apples-to-apples. That's almost impossible to do in the facilities. There's not a facility that we can look at that's where we say, this has the same amenities as what we have, but we did our best to pull some that were very similar. So we also have, do rentals, and through that, we have a lot of partners, the swim club, the hospital, club sports, and the school district. And what I have been talking to them about is a fairly significant increase for rentals. And like I said, you're not approving any fees or any rental agreements tonight. This is going to be a conversation that we need to build upon. It's very important for us to keep having these conversations with our partners. We have to move forward together with these partners. And again, this is going to be something that the council can make some policy decisions on later. When this fee sheet does come back to you, you can decide how you want to interact with the partners. But right now, they are seeing a similar increase and even more. But right now, they are seeing a similar increase and even more. And some of that is because of the way we charge rent now in some of our facilities. Like I said, it's hard for us to get additional revenue in our facilities right now. So some of these will be a significant increase. But we want to keep all the partners at the table. We value them. We know that we have to have them at the table to do this together. So we appreciate them working with us on this. So any questions on the market comparison and options? And if I answered Counselor Peralta's question, okay.
Counselor Gary?
Thank you. Can you go back to the market comparison slide where you had everybody listed? And then just kind of quickly, especially the ones where it isn't evident, can you clip through sort of the ownership, ownership and operatorship model of each of those? So who owns and who operates the CROCK Center in Salem and down the list?
And the CROCK Center is the Salvation Army. The Sherwood YMCA, the building there is owned by the city, and it is operated or rented to the YMCA. Juniper is a district, as is Shaillam Aquatic Center. Woodburn is the city, and SHOOT, I think, is the city of Hillsborough, yes.
City of Hillsborough.
Yeah, so they're all either nonprofits or recreation districts or cities.
And the CROCK Salvation Army is owned and operated by the Salvation Army?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, Ken, were you confirming that for us?
Yes, that is true. It's owned by the Salvation Army and operated by the Salvation Army.
Thanks, Ken.
I had a question. I know that we have not considered setting up a parks district so that the parks have its own discrete funding mechanism. Is that something that you've considered as part of this process? And the reason that I ask is that part of me almost feels like charging higher, having taxpayers absorb more costs than the users of the facility might increase the utilization of the facility. And I'm a little concerned about, you know, I realize these prices are competitive. I've looked at, I've compared them to, you know, Shaillam, for example. They're comparable. But I do worry a little bit about utilization. Do you have any thoughts on that?
Yes, we did look at forming a district, and Jeff may want to weigh in as well. We did look at forming a district when we did the very first feasibility study. And based on the market and the value of additional property taxes outside the city limits, which was not huge, and the pull that we bring, it did not necessarily pan out to be a better deal for us to be able to expand our budget or expand anything. And then I think, Jeff, can I ask you to address the larger issue of our taxing authority?
Yes, the other issue since then is the fire district has been created, which has increased the amount of general government taxes that are levied in the area. And so there's only about 25 or 30 cents of taxable value left under the $10 major five limit, which would not generate much money for a new district.
But that would assume that the city went up to the full $5.50, right?
That's the tax authority that exists right now, yes.
Okay, thank you.
That is a very common question that I get asked a lot, and I know some places can do it. And right now, the situation is we didn't see, think that it would really add much taxable value and also the issue of the ceiling.
Because it seems like the city could forego part of its $5.50 and in the creation of a recreation district. And anyway, I just wanted to throw that out there. I realize that we're starting to bump up to the edge of that.
Yeah.
Thank you for answering the question.
As you're going forward and looking at these rates, for everybody in the room too that is considering these recommendations going forward, I'd like to call out a couple unique examples from other places as well. So the city of Dearborn, Michigan eliminated all pool user fees for everybody under the age of 13. And the effect of that was that they had so many families that started using the pool that their revenue actually increased to the point that it was no longer a draw on the general fund. They are a very demographically different city, so they're a majority-minority city, and the demographic composition of families isn't exactly the same. However, it worked and pools, it's the only, it's the only pool that I actively know of that became profitable in the United States. Because of course, there are, the histories of pools is that they are a social good and meant for the people. So I just put that out, examine of looking at changing a fee structure entirely, which I think there are other community benefits to making that accessible. And then the other, the other thing that would be a bit of a departure from anything that's talked about here, but I have seen other recreation facilities, especially combined facilities, where there is some level of sponsorship that comes in from either surrounding sports teams or sports companies, which we do have a few of here in Oregon, and some of which, as you know, have expressed interest in this. And so I would just, as a potential future revenue source as well, if there was any space in the facility to allow for that, that that could be another way of offsetting some of the ongoing costs of the facility. The other thing that has been really successful in other communities that I know about, and they did this in the city of Luzan, is that they had dedicated family recreation. And in fact, the priority as they designed their new facility was entirely about making sure that year-round recreation was available to the community. And then on top of that, there became an entire, as opposed to like a family rate, there was a family league for different specific activities. So, you know, family soccer league essentially, or things of that nature. And in the format that they set up, and some of the ways that they used those sponsorship dollars, was that if you joined a team as a family, then the other facilities, the other recreation, the other uses that were paid uses, offset that cost. So it incentivized families participating in sports altogether. Just thought I'd throw those out there.
And Mayor, you have anticipated my last and final point very nicely, which is the policy decisions and timing.
Before you do that?
Yes.
Council President, please.
Thanks for all the information. Numbers always fascinate me. It looks like our non-resident rate, proposed rate, would be figured out about 21%.
25% discount for in-city residents, yes.
Yeah. So with that, that basically offsets the general fund dollars from your previous slides. But it's really putting the full freight of the facility on the local taxpayer. So can you explain the methodology on why we would only offer 25% discount or maybe not increase the, or maybe increase the non-resident rate a little bit more?
Sure, and that really does come to the, some of the policy dials that I want to talk about a little bit. So let me, let me jump into that. And this really is, what you both are talking about are really the policy dials. And this is something when, when we start to revise this and take it to the next stage, you get to adjust the policy dials on this. And so the types of things that you could anticipate looking for is that cost recovery percentage. Right now, I think we're 33%, and we would go to 57% under this model. Is that what the council would like to see? The membership rates, the council gets to set that and through a value-based lens. The scholarship subsidies and incentives. Right now, in this estimated budget, we have $60,000 worth of donations going into $60,000 worth of scholarships. It may be that the council wants to increase that amount as well. The in-city discount amount, is 25% the right amount to include in that? The partners and contracts, that's another issue that you'll be discussing later to figure out, how do we want to subsidize those partners? How do they bring to the, what they have to the table? There could be some capital offsets from some of the clubs, for example. The naming policy, I think, is what you were referring to, Mayor, is if there's any revenue in terms of bringing in name partners or other things. There's a couple of examples around the state where that is the case.
Or just banners also as a means of advertising during a certain thing that's not, that doesn't carry quite as much permanence.
Exactly, exactly. And then it could be possible for us to negotiate with either the county or surrounding cities to see if they want to buy into the in-city discount rate and subsidize that. We've had at least one conversation about that, just to see and start exploring that, to see if there's any kind of interest in that. So you get to adjust those dials. Those are the types of things that, once we apply a fee to this and we start refining the numbers, those are the dials that you all get to decide as the policymaking body. What we would say, and what we've really tried to bring through this, is that that too will be balanced. So if you turn one dial up, you're going to turn another dial down and vice versa. So what we have provided is the starting point for where you can adjust those dials. So for example, Mayor, you mentioned the under 13 free recreation, and you and I had talked about that, and doing just a rough estimate of that, it's about $300 to $350,000. And so if the council decides that's something they want to do, we can quantify that for you. So I know you had mentioned that, and we just wanted to look into that. The good news is the council has a strategic plan of values set up to make those decisions. We really want to make sure this has long-term financial sustainability, so we want to make sure that those dials are adjusted. And then we also know we need to be accountable and responsive to the community needs. So, you know, setting up what you mentioned as a family league or something like, all of those things are really great opportunities that when we have a new facility, we can structure it based on the council values. What you'd like to incentivize? Would you like to incentivize seniors in the facility, youth in the facility? What type of programs would you like to incentivize? So what we've tried to present to you tonight is a foundation to show you that if we move forward at the next, on the next steps of potentially putting up a capital bond on the May of '25 ballot, we know basically what the additional pull would be on the general fund. So just.
One moment.
Yep.
Of the 2.7 and, or 2.697 in revenues, what of that percentage-wise is user fees versus partnership revenue versus, you know, other revenue streams we have? And how does that, the percentage of that break down to percentage today?
Mm-hmm, I would have to get that information about today. We don't, I think we don't do a lot of annual passes right now. As a matter of fact, we kind of got, with COVID, we cut that way back and tried to go to month-to-month or three months. We'd have to look, Ken might know more about that. I will say, we tried to guesstimate, so for example, the annual memberships, we think that's only 10% of our membership revenue. And that's because there's going to be very few people that, you know, swim laps every single day and want to have that annual pass versus people who might want to have a punch card. So Ken, I don't know if you have any percentages of how we spread that out, but anything you can add here would be great.
Well, all of the revenue, the 2.697, is really coming from fees and charges associated with just the fee structure that Susan showed you, but also through programs and services that are taking place in that facility. So people paying for things like swimming lessons or that art class. So it's that revenue, and that's the bulk of it. That's probably 90% of that, 2.697. And then there's some other small amounts coming in and donations and some vending and those types of things. But the, you know, the bulk of that is all through fees and charges for either, you know, out of that fee structure for just utilizing the facility or for the programs that take place there. And, you know, it's spread, we spread the revenue based on the performance of these types of facilities, not only in Oregon, but looking nationally, how people utilize these facilities. And then we estimate how many day passes you'll sell, how many, you know, 10-visit passes, how many month-to-month. And that's based on the market conditions with the demographics, the numbers of households, the presence of other facilities, all that factors into that. But I said, it's, the revenue stream is heaviest coming out of those daily fees. And that's well over almost two, not the daily fees, but just the admission fees to the facility. And that's over about two-thirds of the revenues coming out of it. And that's historically what most facilities do.
So to follow up on that, we're not asking our partners to fund like 2.2 million of that 2.697?
No. There's, there's revenue shown there from the partners primarily through rental of the pool. And, you know, it's a significant number, and that's factored in there. But that's still probably not even 10%, probably even less than that. Very small percentage of the overall revenue is coming from that. It's all from primarily user fees outside of those partners.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was equitable across the sources.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Chenoweth.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Couple of questions. First, I assume that the 4.817 million cost to run the facility, that's pretty much fixed. We know that that's accurate. It's, we know that's about where we're going to be ballpark-wise. It's not like a variable number, that's pretty firm.
Yeah, I would say if there's some tweaking, it would, it would basically be pretty minor with how much programming we do in the building, but yeah.
Okay, and the guesstimate on what we might bring in in programming is probably not as solidly fixed. It's probably a bigger variable number, knowing how these things tend to work out. Am I accurate in that assumption?
That's the way we do our budget every single year in Parks and Recreation. We try and estimate what the participation rates will be, whether or not they increase or decrease. We do estimate every year. I basically asked Ken the same question today about how solid he felt on this, and I will let him answer that.
Well, we try to be conservative. All of us, and myself included, came out of the public sector as Parks and Recreation professionals. So we've set budgets for these kinds of facilities that we've had to operate personally before we were in the business. So we understand the need to be, especially at this point in the planning process, conservative. So we're to the high side on costs. We're pretty conservative on the revenue, even though it's a big number. Basically, our facilities that we've opened up across the country over the last 30 years, and that's where in the hundreds of those facilities, you know, basically, I'd say 85 to 90% or more have met or exceeded our budget projections in terms of how they would perform, and that's the way we want it. So it's not absolute, but we historically, and if anything, have been sometimes accused of being too conservative, certainly not generally too liberal in our thinking about how the facility will perform financially. So, you know, we feel confident where we are right now. There's still a lot of variables in play. And again, we're still a number of years out, well, four years out, from potentially even opening a facility. So we're trying to forecast that as much as we can. So, you know, we feel pretty confident that what we've developed right now, and staff has been part of all of this effort. So they've kind of looked through all the ways we calculated everything from use numbers to, you know, how, how many swim lessons, all that stuff. They've looked at, and we've done a lot of back and forth. So I, you know, I feel confident that Susan and all of her staff feel confident that the numbers that have been put together are doable.
Is the underlying assumption a roughly three times increase in usage of the facility over what we're currently having?
Well, I don't know. It's not a straight-line math because we're talking about fees that are significantly different from what's currently being done. But, you know, the community center is not particularly a great building, is probably, you all know, for getting a lot of strong usage. You don't have a, really a fitness element, which is a major driver in this facility. And we don't have the same grade of aquatic amenities. So it's a much different facility with different amenities, you know, a legitimate gymnasium, as Susan said, with two courts. So it's a much different facility than what you currently have now. So the fees are higher, utilization rates are much higher, much higher than what you currently have with the buildings that you have, and the numbers of programs and services that will be offered through the facility would also increase rather dramatically. So it's a combination of a lot of different things that really get at that, at that large revenue number of 2.697. And I know that looks like a big massive number, but we, for facilities of this size in these types of markets, we regularly see revenue streams in those ranges. That's not, we're not sitting there going, wow, that's, you know, if the stars don't align, it doesn't work. No, we feel comfortable that with everything that's being planned for the facility and how it would be operated and the programs and services that would be offered, that that is realistic at this point in time.
Okay, shifting gears from my last question. On the capital bond, I know almost. Okay, shifting gears from my last question. On the capital bond, I know almost every time this question has come before us, or this discussion's come before us, I've asked, are we looking for outside sources to help bring that capital bond request down? How much time is being put into that effort? Where are we at with that? Do we anticipate seeing anybody coming in to partner with us to bring that capital bond down?
Yes, there are conversations. In terms of commitments, it's kind of a chicken-and-egg thing right now. We don't own the property. We haven't decided to tee up the actual bond. But there will be a step in the process. I've been talking with some capital fundraising consultants that have done this in the region for other similar facilities, and, you know, looking at spending about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a capital fundraising campaign to bring in about five to six hundred thousand dollars could be the type of thing that we're looking for, and that would be a part of the process. Timing-wise, it's not, it's not time right now to start asking for donations, but grants are, you know, we keep, we keep an eye on grants all the time, whether it's for parks projects or something like this.
Any additional questions, Councilor Gary? No? Nothing additional? And nothing else? Director Muir?
I have one more sort of next steps, which is, we are doing polling right now. So after the November election, we picked that right up, in working with Jake from Praxis again to understand how the community is feeling. If we do tee up a capital bond for May of twenty-five, we expect to present those to you at your December eighteenth work session. We have started testing some of the ballot title and explanatory statement work. That will come back to you in January or February. And then ultimately, for a May twenty-five general obligation bond, the timeline for the city council to make a decision to put something on there would be the end of February of 2025. So those are the next steps. We'll next see you in December with the results of the poll, and we do not know what to expect out of that poll. So stay tuned.
Wonderful. Thank you. Well, I know this is, this facility is so much more than only a swimming pool. There's so many other aspects to it. I loved hearing about the, you know, the two full-size basketball courts. There's so much opportunity there. But just to draw the attention back to the pool part for one second, we were having this conversation over the last couple of years. I remember I got a, what I thought was a great, a great piece of advice from someone, and that piece of advice, which I've brought before the council, and, 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 and everyone working on this before, and I'll bring again, is that if you want to get your kids off their phones, throw them in a pool. The kids, not the phones. Okay, wonderful. Well, we will close the work session at six fifty-three PM. We're going to take a seven-minute break, and we will start promptly at seven PM. And for everyone standing back, there are lots of seats that are available, both in front and throughout the audience. Thank you all for being here tonight.
Recording stopped.
Hey, good, how are you?
Good, Adam, how are you?
All right, could I invite the council back to find their seats, and members of the audience to sit back down, please? Good evening. We're getting ready to start the regular business meeting. If I could invite you to find your seats, council and honored guests. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, November twelfth, twenty-twenty-four Regular Business Meeting of the McMinnville City Council. I would like to call the meeting to order and ask our city recorder to do a roll call, please.
Council Gary.
Good evening.
Council Minkie.
Present.
Council Chenoweth.
Present.
Council Peralta.
Here.
Council Payne on Zoom.
Here.
Council President Garvin is here.
He is here.
Mayor Drabkin.
I am here as well. Thank you. Council Minkie, would you again lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance, declare the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. We are going to start with a proclamation this evening for Small Business Saturday. Whereas the city of McMinnville celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, and whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are thirty-four-point-seven million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent ninety-nine-point-seven percent of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for sixty-one-point-one percent of net new jobs created since nineteen ninety-five, and small businesses employ forty-five-point-nine percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas sixty-eight cents of every dollar spent at a small business in the U.S. stays in the local community, and every dollar spent at a small business creates an additional forty-eight cents in local business activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And whereas fifty-nine percent of U.S. consumers aware of Small Business Saturday shopped eight, shopped or ate at a small, independently-owned retailer or restaurant on Small Business Saturday, and whereas the city of McMinnville supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday After Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, now therefore I, Remy Drabkin, Mayor of the city of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, as Small Business Saturday, and urge our community members and communities across the county to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and shop small throughout the year. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of McMinnville to be affixed this twelfth day of November twenty-twenty-four. We don't have anyone here to hand this off to. As a local small business owner, I, I will, I will curry this all the way to our city recorder. Thank you very much. We will now go to the portion of the evening where we take comments from community members. Any interested audience members are invited to provide comments, and any comment provided that requires some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing today or at some future date. Comments are limited to three minutes per person for a total of thirty minutes. If you are on Zoom and you wish to speak, please use the raise-your-hand feature or send a chat directly to the city recorder, and we will announce you when your time is up. And please remember, when you're making public comment, to provide your name and the city that you live in for the record. And please remember to fill out a public comment card to submit to the city recorder prior to leaving for the record. And you can monitor your own time on the screen. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment this evening?
Yes. Before we start, I do want to state for the record that we received six emails that have been entered into the record and will be on the amended packet, and those emails are from Anna Barsati, Eliana Barsati, Henry Barsati, Lisa Macy Baker, Jason Bizon, and Andrew Larkin. First, we'll start with Kitri Colbertson.
Welcome. Thank you so much for being here this evening.
Thank you. My name is Kitri Colbertson, and I live at two-twenty Northeast Sixth Street in McMinnville. Good evening, Mayor Drabkin, and council members and city staff. My name is Kitri Colbertson, and I'm the owner of a McMinnville small business, Scarlet Communications. I'm a Lynnfield alumna and a mom of two kids in the McMinnville Public School District. I'm here in the role of a past MACPAC committee member, and as the current vice president of the Library Foundation of McMinnville. And I'm here to speak in strong support of the forthcoming potential bond measure for the new recreation center and much-needed improvements to McMinnville's parks, senior center, and library. And today, I want to speak specifically about the library, as I assume you're going to hear a lot about the recreation center. Our library is the heart of our community's learning, and it's simply too small to support McMinnville's diverse, growing community of learners and families. It's only been expanded one time since the original Carnegie Library was built in nineteen twelve. Imagine a library with enough room for any child or learner who wants to come in for storytime, research, or to learn a new skill. An expanded library would house more books and traditional learning resources, and also an expanded library of things, which currently lends out practical items like sewing machines, musical instruments, and even tools and jumper cables, which Lisa Macy Baker and I got a chance to try out, to learn new skills. A more modern, spacious library would also have dedicated areas for technology resources, including equipment that supports creativity, distance learning, job readiness, and entrepreneurship. With more space, the library could offer additional tech programs for people of all ages, from teen coding nights that my kids really enjoy, to tech help for seniors, which I definitely foresee myself needing in the future. And let's talk about location. A renovated library would connect more effectively to city park, creating inspirational indoor and outdoor spaces, and it would make our library a true community hub connected right to our beautiful downtown, seamlessly blending educational, community, and recreational opportunities. With all of the improved facilities this bond will support, we can create a city where everyone can find a right-sized place to learn, meet people, and do healthy activities. I urge you to support this measure and give citizens the chance to invest in the spaces and services that will serve McMinnville in the future, for me, my kids, and their kids in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else signed up for public comment this evening?
Yes. Next is Meredith Maxfield.
Thank you. Evening, welcome. Nice to see you.
Good evening. My name is Meredith Maxfield, and I live at seven sixty-two Northwest Michaelbook Court. Good evening, Mayor Drabkin, and city council members and city staff, and thank you, Director Muir, for your wonderful, informative presentation. I wanted to publicly express my support for the new rec center and the bond you are considering for the spring. I want to see McMinnville improve and invest in our community spaces. A new rec center, improved library, improved senior center, and improved outdoor spaces, where we come together and connect. Those are the places that mean a lot to me and my family. When I interviewed to be on MACPAC, my youngest child was two. She is now seven. Nothing highlights how long something takes like the changes in a child, but I appreciate the time that it has taken. I did it for a while, and I've come to appreciate all the hard work our city has done to get in a place where we can afford to operate this new facility. I was excited to hear that the estimated increase in operating costs versus revenue is only a difference of about sixty thousand dollars. That's less than, did I say that right? Did I get that number right?
I think you-
Six hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, sorry. I moved the comma. Oh, no big deal, no big deal. That's less than I expected. Sixty thousand dollars is way less than I expected, but I am thrilled, I mean thrilled, to hear about the plan to have a dedicated- I am thrilled, I mean thrilled, to hear about the plan to have a dedicated maintenance person, and that we have worked into the operating budget, the ongoing maintenance and capital replacements. We have learned from the past, and we have an improved plan for the future. Government provides what we can't provide for ourselves individually. I can't maintain all the roads that I drive on. I can't afford to purchase all the books that I'm going to read, and I can't build myself a new rec center. But I hear from all the community members, my friends at PTA meetings, at church, that we want this. We want these improved spaces. And so let's pool our resources and provide a new rec center, improved library, improved senior center, and improved open spaces for our city. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Any other public comment this evening? I know I'm going to ask you to refrain from applause and booing. Just be consistent there. Thank you.
Yes. Next we have Ron Baker.
Thank you. Welcome. Nice to see you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Thank you, city staff. My name is Ron Baker, and I live at 1107 Cowell Street. My wife and I both grew up here in McMinnville. We have two nine-year-old, or I have a nine-year-old and 13-year-old daughters that go to the public schools and have used the Park and Rec system. This bond is really important to me and my family. I grew up with the Parks Department, playing different sports throughout the years. And my kids are now still playing on the same fields, in the same gym, in the same pool that I did 30-plus years ago. The same ones that probably Zach and Adam did as well, as long as, and Remy. My nine-year-old daughter now is on the swim club, and it saddens me to go in there when I go in to workout or swim laps, and I see buckets or garbage cans collecting rainwater. The citizens of McMinnville need new facilities like this. This bond will give us the chance to update these facilities that we want to recreate in as a community. If we want to attract and retain talented workforce, we need amenities like this to give people healthy outlets, that wellness that Susan talked about. This city means a lot to me, and it means a lot to a lot of people here. And the bond that we'll use to build these facilities is something that me and my family hold heartily support along with the operating budget. Thank you for considering this. We appreciate your time and the work that the city staff has done.
Thank you very much. Has anyone else signed up for public comment this evening?
Yes. Next, we have Mackenzie Frazier.
Thank you. Nice to see you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time. My name is Mackenzie Frazier, and I live here in McMinnville at 123 Northwest 11th Street. I'm a Lynnfield alum. I'm an academic advisor at the Chameca de Campus here in McMinnville. And I'm also involved in the McMinnville Community Tennis Association, as well as the MHS tennis programs. And tonight, I'm here to speak in strong support of the proposed cultural, parks, and recreation bond measure. Our library, senior center, community center, parks, and aquatic center are the beating heart of local life in McMinnville. Increased tourism, while excellent, means that many of McMinnville's third spaces, places that promote informal public life, are not solely for locals anymore. City funding of our true third spaces is an investment in the social glue that holds our community together, from infants to the elderly. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Additional public comment this evening?
Yes. Next, we have Shannon Dunn.
Thank you. Good evening. Nice to see you.
Not really a sitter, but I'll give it a whirl. Get all my pages out. Don't tarp my time yet. I'm Shannon Dunn. I live at 518 Northeast 10th Street in McMinnville. Good evening, everyone. I'm here to show my support for the bond for a new rec center, improved and expanded park spaces, and improved senior center services, specifically more outdoor sport facilities. So if tennis was on your bingo card, I'm your girl. Regardless of the recent election and who is coming in or moving on, I support this, and I don't want the support to get lost in a pile of work to be done. I moved to McMinnville at age two, went to Adams, then Patton, then MHS, taught at Dunaway, and now I work at Lynnfield. My husband, Casey Rich, another townie, has taught and coached in McMinnville for 23 years. So we come to you with experience. We're invested. Our two kids have played all the things, with Parks and Rec soccer being a highlight. The Golden Lights Sabers and Banana Bandits will go down in history. But our facilities need some love. In 1988 to 1991, I played third and fourth doubles on the same tennis courts at Cowles, where my son currently plays. Yes, three years of the same thing. Today, there are fewer tennis courts for him to play on than I had back then. With our population more than doubled since I moved here, we have only two city courts now where people can play tennis. It's true. There are eight courts at two schools where a lot of people play, but those are often locked or so slippery, and they're dangerous. I am grateful that the school doesn't maintain those eight courts where even one of your councilmen played. The sad truth is, we haven't really been a tennis town in a really long time, maybe ever. I'm sure some people are nodding in agreement because they stood here and said the same thing decades ago. An argument for more courts is old news, and now we have a very popular new sport of pickleball needing space as well. Space that could be multi-use if all the entities can coexist peacefully. It can be done. Maybe the argument needs a reboot. We have added a wildly popular Community Tennis Association, MCTA, in the last several years, where kids of all ages can play and coach. Plus 80-plus middle schoolers in year one of middle school tennis. We have a new and robust set of tennis coaches at Lynnfield, offering hitting sessions for local kids. Some of us are hauling our kids to Newburgh or Salem for opportunities to play when the opportunities simply aren't here. That's money that we are investing elsewhere that could stay here. This is not a new phenomenon. Towns grow, and parks need to grow with them. Racquet and paddle sports have not been a priority with community leaders for the past 40 years. In fact, my father-in-law helped build eight courts at the high school that were torn down for more parking. That's a real head-scratcher. And yes, I know high school isn't a city park, but I want to illustrate the lack of prioritization of tennis in general. Courts take up a lot of space. They need resurfacing or budgeting for routine maintenance. People run their dogs. They run their kids on skateboards on them. But these can be managed, and people can be educated. I'm willing to pay it forward for my kids and your kids, and the kids they'll have, and frankly, all of it. Investing in people. Put my money where my mouth is. Don't cut me off. I'd rather have kids on, I'd rather have kids on courts or fields and gyms and pools than glued to electronics that do little for mind, body, or soul. Invest in people. Invest in kids. The return will be worth it. Thank you.
Thank you. I did not realize you were an Adams School graduate as well. Will you invite the next person up for public comment?
Next, we have Kevin Chambers.
Thank you. Do you remember the fight song, Shannon? Yeah. A-D-A-M-S-S-C-H-O-L, Adams School, Adams School. We'll forever, da-da-da-da-da, fight, fight, fight. We're the Hawks. All right. Good evening. Sorry for the delay.
No problem. Thank you, Mayor Drabkin, council and staff. My name is Kevin Chambers, and I live at 16819 Northwest Baker Creek Road. I grew up in McMinnville. I graduated from McMinnville High School, and now I'm a small business and property owner in town. I've been involved with the proposed bond process, park bond process, as a member of the MACPAC, and as an ongoing group of citizens committed to supporting this initiative through all the twists and turns. My family and I are also active users of the pool and the community center. I grew up using these facilities, and they are aging and deteriorating. I believe that the services and opportunities that are proposed for this bond will offer our town and make our town a better place, and enhance the current facilities, and create programming previously unavailable. My background is in finance, and one of my roles in the MACPAC was to always ask, yes, but how much will this cost, and if we build this, can we afford it? I have thoroughly reviewed the proposed budget, and I believe that the budget for this facility, as proposed, is smart and well reasoned. I especially appreciated the dedicated funds for a maintenance team, as well as the dedicated funds set aside for deferred maintenance. The majority of the estimated increased cost to the city would be for these types of things. These costs are also so we don't repeat the mistakes of the past and keep these facilities in our community for years to come. Let's build and maintain buildings that our town deserves. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who's next, please?
Next is Cheryl Shoki.
Thank you very much. Welcome. Thank you for being here this evening.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to talk to you about what we're passionate about right now. I'm Cheryl Shoki, and I live here in McMinnville, 126 Northwest 22nd Street. And I was born here, went to elementary, junior high, high school, swam in the same pool that's still here. I have gray hairs, much more than most of the people behind me. It's time. We honestly haven't had anything change, as you well know, if you've been here for any significant time in decades. And I taught at McMinnville School District for 32 years, in both middle schools, almost all of the elementary schools. I did a little gig there for a while in between my two middle school experiences, and I coached for 16 years. I'm not going to get the big benefit of this bond. Well, I'm going to be paying because I live in town. Happy to do that. What I'm most passionate about is that the kids now, the kids in the future, have something that will keep them active and healthy, and mentally healthy. So, oh, I forgot really why I'm here. I am a big part of the pickleball club. And you may laugh, but in 2020, there were 111 members in our pickleball club. COVID hit, okay? There are now 300, well, the first year, 2021, it went up to 190. And then, since then, we're now at 307 members of the pickleball club. You know how many indoor courts we have? Three. Three for 300-plus people, okay? The pickleball club wants to be a partner with Park and Rec. If you will please put this forward to the voters, so we can get a bond passed for our kids and for us old pickleball players. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Next, we have Brian Branch.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome. Nice to see you this evening. Thank you. Thanks for being here.
So I'm Brian Branch. I live at 2632 Northwest Dallas Kelly Street, McMinnville. I have two children in McMinnville Public Schools, and I briefly want to talk about the utilization of the issue that was raised during the work session. And I just know with two young kids that our utilization of the facilities that were discussed tonight would increase quite significantly, including the pool, and also the basketball courts, and fitness facilities, and the classes that were discussed. I know my daughter would greatly appreciate the gymnastics classes and other things that my son plays basketball. We would happily pay the $100 a month fee that was discussed for a family of four, and I think that would be a really great asset for the community and investment in health and well-being of our children and the community as well. And, you know, I think with our kids who are always pushing for screen time, I think, you know, every second the children are not on YouTube is a great benefit to the future of society, because that is, is why it's down here. So, thank you for your time.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Next, public comment, please.
Next is Sarah Linerts.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Nice to see you.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for all the work that you're doing. My name is Sarah Linerts. I live at 2232 Northwest Pinehurst Drive. I've not lived in McMinnville my whole life. I have only been here seven years, but I love it here. My family, we love it here. I also have two young kids in public schools, and I work at McMinnville High School. I have spent most of today trying to think of what important thing I need to say right in this moment. And I think what matters to me is that spending money like this on programming and facilities for the youth of our community is about prevention. And we could use a lot more time and effort spent on things like prevention than Band-Aid fixes for some of the really hard things that our kids are going through right now. And while a brand-new community rec center is not going to be the answer for everything, it is a really good answer for a lot of things. So, thank you for the work that you're doing, and I 100% support this, and also would gladly pay the proposed fee structure. And I was also glad to see that there's considerations for some type of, you know, sliding fee scale or something like that, that would subsidize for families that may not be comfortable paying a $100 a month for a family of four. So, thanks what you're doing for the kids.
Thank you. Next, public comment, please.
Next, we have Amanda Farmer.
Thank you. Good evening. Nice to see you.
Have to talk to the council before it all shifts and stuff. Also, Remy, you've done a great job as mayor. Thank you so much for your service. I'm actually going to talk about, first of all, I'm super in favor of the bond. Yay. Go Parks. Awesome.
Do you mind stating your name and city?
Oh, sorry. You should know me by now. Hi. My name is Amanda Farmer, and I live in McMinnville. And I have, yeah. Is that good enough? Okay, great. I have three kids. Two of them are in public schools here. I'm a substitute teacher here in McMinnville. And I'm a business owner, and that's really what I want to talk to you about, is I run a nonprofit called St. Bezzie's Art Collab. And what I really want to talk about is the Nelson House that's right next to the park. Nelson House, 417 Adams Street. And basically, first of all, if you guys are doing something with it right now as we speak, forgive me for bringing this up. I'm sorry. But as it stands right now, it's crumbling. It's not being used. I actually found on the city of McMinnville website what the city council had figured out what to do with the house. I can't remember when this was published, maybe 2018. But you guys came up with seven different things. Sell the building, lease the building, lease the house for needed housing with nonprofit, relocate the historic house to another property, amend urban renewal to include this property, smaller programs at city hall move to the property, create nonprofit resource center. Now, I talked with the city manager. I know there's a lot of stuff wrong with the house. The reason why I talked to him is because I wanted to put my nonprofit in there. And I was absolutely willing to work with the rats and the leaks and everything because I'm a nonprofit. I will go wherever I can afford. And unfortunately, we didn't get to any kind of negotiations. Thankfully, I did find another space behind the DMV, and I am operating my nonprofit out of that, which I'm really proud of. But my goodness, if this house could be somewhat, somehow included in the bond, if we could give funds, it's just, it depresses me and makes me really upset that this house is just literally rotting and not doing anything. And I'm one of those DIY fixer-uppers. I watch all the HGTV shows. I'm like, come on, you guys. We can fix this. We can do something with it. Also, BT dubs, we need to get rid of that invasive ivy, because that's where the rats love to, there's an OSU study on invasive ivy and how rats like love the ivy that's around the house. So if we could just let our Parks guys know, hey, get rid of the invasive ivy, that will help with the rat situation. That's all I have to say. I'm just kind of bringing this to the attention of the city council and the new city council, whoever is in the room, that something needs to be done with Nelson House. Thank you so much.
Thank you. While public comment isn't a time for back and forth, I'm wondering if we could get a quick staff update on why the Nelson House, just address why the Nelson House is currently empty. Some of the conversations that have happened previously, the city manager, I recall, a concept you had about hosting nonprofits there. I recall, a concept you had about hosting nonprofits there as a use and any potential outcomes currently.
Yes, Mayor. So briefly, we have entertained a number of interested parties. There are significant improvements that need to be made in the building before we have another tenant. We've been working with our new facilities team to evaluate all of our facilities. And frankly, we're spending time on some of our larger, more actively used facilities before we get to the Nelson House. So it's still in the queue to work on.
Thank you very much. Next public comment, please.
That's everyone that signed up.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that would like to provide public comment? And is there anyone on Zoom that would like to provide public comment this evening? Not seeing any. We will move to advice and information items, reports from councilors on committee and board assignments. I will start with Councilor Geary, please.
Thank you. To go back to this note page. Third Street Improvement, in-between meetings, DEIAC will be meeting this Thursday. Affordable Housing will be on the 20th. And then, the only one I have some update on was MIRAC, where we updated on the selection process of the ultimate RB property and the process of reviewing the applicants to winnowing down to hosting that forum, which I don't have the date in front of me. If you could remind me or help me find it online, but that date is upcoming so we can get that out. That's my update.
Thank you very much. Councilor Chenoweth.
Innovation Campus PAC Meeting Number Two occurred. After much discussion, deliberation, and hesitancy, it was determined that we would allow proxies for members. Mark Davis Thusley was allowed to proxy in for Sid Friedman. We spent the majority of the meeting in an exercise designed to bring to the surface our view of the existing land to help inform the consultants who are helping to create a visual concept design. Hang tight, guys, because the next phase is going to be the naming of the Innovation Campus.
Thank you. Councilor Peralta.
Thank you, Mayor. Council of Governments will be holding its annual meeting awards dinner in the first week of March. We have an update for McMinnville residents who commute to Portland, which is that the Aurora Donald interchange, which is, as folks know, one of our main routes to Portland from Mac is going into Phase Two for construction. So crews are going to be working on that from 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM, which will result in two-lane closures on I-5 for the foreseeable future. So if you're driving to Portland, you might want to think of a different route. MCM11 is not meeting in November. And I thought I would share a complaint from a neighbor on Davis Street who is concerned about the increase in large semi trucks on Davis Street, particularly with knife ridge construction and, I'm forgetting the other one, but there were, that's happened ever, it's kind of become normalized on Davis since the bridge construction. And I don't think those trucks should be routing that way. They should probably be going out Lafayette. So I thought I'd share that for city staff.
Mr. Hunsaker, I trust you got that note. Thank you. Councilor Manke.
Okay. McMinnville Housing Production Strategy. There is a public survey out. This comes from Evan Hipps sending a reminder that the city of McMinnville has an open survey for the housing production strategy. We would love to hear from you and people you know about their experience trying to find housing in McMinnville. The city is seeking input to better understand needs, priorities, and barriers. This will help inform our housing programs for the next eight years. The survey will be open until December 1st, so they've still got several weeks. And you can also enter raffle for a chance to win a $100 gift card. So please give that some serious consideration. In regard to YCAP, we have a new CFO. That being said, and we're also getting caught up on our accounting and we're really on point with the audit this year. But we are still hiring and training personnel for the McMinnville ADP. Training is happening at the Newburgh ADP that has its shelter portion partition open. There are also still some safety concerns at the McMinnville ADP. There are no cages on the sprinkler system sprinklers. This must be done. A smoking area needs to be set up out front of the building because the back is non-negotiable at this time of the year. And appliances have been purchased but not hooked up. I had a meeting this morning with Amber and I suggested the need for them to hire a handyman to do much of this work and they are giving it some serious consideration. So if any of you have some suggestions or some low-cost ideas of how you might assist YCAP, I'm sure they would be delighted to hear from you.
You will go on Zoom to Councilor Payne.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Let me grab my notes here. Sorry, just one second. I had too many notes going. The Family Justice Center, so let's say, a lot of the members are coordinating and collaborating for the development of the Family Justice Center to serve the county. That planning is progressing at a steady pace. Some committees have begun meeting and others should start in the first quarter of next year. Our agenda was pretty light and so there was a brief opportunity to discuss safety and services in schools, particularly related to mental health supports in the schools that are provided by the county, special education, and bullying. And then Landscape Review meets next week.
Thank you. Council President.
Thank you, Mayor. YCOM met today. We now meet odd number months at 3:00 PM on the second Tuesday of each month. We meet monthly and about half of them got canceled, so we just formalized that process. Big thing for whoever takes over that committee after my term is up is going to be there, going to be going through the IGA and updating it. The last time it was really gone through was 2006. Some of our full-fledged members were associate members then. Some of them aren't even still in existence. They've merged with other entities or created new entities. And then there's also language, i.e. like the city McMinnville appointees' term on YCOM is actually, it's always like in an odd number year. So typically, appointments are done on election cycles, so maybe it should be done in an even number year. Just formalizing some of that language. So who's ever appointed at that, happy to meet with you and download the last six and a half years of YCOM knowledge I have. So you can have a smooth transition into the deep end of an IGA revision. Airport Commission would normally meet last week, but it got moved to the 19th at 6:00 PM. So if you want to hear anything about the airport, join us a week from today at 6:00 PM in this building. The McMinnville Board meeting, we meet next Wednesday at 9:30. And that's what I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I was able to attend the Lynnfield Home game, also honoring Veterans Day. And I just want to pause and thank all of our veterans for your service. Yeah, we I also was able to attend the 10-year anniversary of Unidos this past week, an important partner to the city and for the community. And of course, we were all able to enjoy trick-or-treating on Third Street recently. I was especially delighted with hopscotch's bag of candy exchange for a small stuffy. I thought that was just a wonderful way to keep the candy circulating and send kids home with a little additional, a little, something additional to last a little bit longer. I was also able to attend and speak at the McMinnville Women's March here on Civic Plaza last week. I have, in terms of council business, I'm recommending for appointment Denny Elmer to the McMinnville Water and Light Commission. And we, I am also recommending that we add back our second meeting in November. And lastly, I have brought a copy of the council agreements, which this body as a whole has signed. And I would like to read them into the public record right now and remind council of what they have, this council, this body of people, has agreed to. And I'm not going to read them in order. I'm going to read them in the order in which I believe you have offended these agreements that you made, Councilor Chenoweth. Number one says, I will recognize that the council's role is to set policy and not be administrators. Number two says, I will individually support the collective decision-making of the council. If I disagree with the decision made by the council, I will exercise my convictions without personalizing the issue and without eroding the collective reputation of the council. Once the decision is made, I will respect that decision. Next one says, I will engage respectfully with other members of the council and community. Even when we disagree philosophically, by articulating my view, listening openly to others' perspectives and rationale, sharing my position and intended actions, I will consistently communicate. The next one says, I will agree to participate in clarifying conversations and conflict resolutions. And the last says, I will follow the intention and the law concerning doing council business outside of council meetings. I find you have inarguably violated most, if not all. And so while it will have little effect on the remainder of your term, I am removing all of your council assignments for the remainder of your term. And were I in office, I would not assign you new council meetings in my next term. But I am not. So I'm sure your committee positions will return.
We're going to go to department head reports and I will start with our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Would you like me to start with the city service charge issue?
Yes, please, sir.
Off of Scott Burt's table. There's a memo in your packet, page 22 of your packet. The ordinance that established the city services charge, ordinance 5123, established an automatic CPI index each year based on the September CPI U West Coast Index, not to exceed 5% in a single year. Last year, the index was quite a bit higher than it is now. We were less than a year into collecting the fee. It went into effect in January 2023. And at least at that point, our observations were that the fee was perhaps going to outperform its budget expectations. And so staff recommended that the council not implement a CPI index last year and you did not do that. This year, we are recommending a CPI index of 2.1%. When we built the budget, we built 3% in, not knowing what inflation would be six or eight months ago. There is no council action required to implement the CPI index. That's baked into the ordinance. If you want to have no increase or a lesser increase, we need your direction on that tonight. If the preference of the council is either no increase or a partial increase, let us know what that is and we will bring a resolution back to you in a subsequent meeting to enact that. If you're comfortable with the 2.1 CPI index, you don't need to take any formal action other than indicating your preference for that tonight. Just note that an increase of 2.1% would increase the single-family rate of the city services charge from $13 to $13.27 a month. And the low-income charge would move from $1.30 per month to $1.33 per month. The full rate sheet for all residential and commercial meters is included in the SAF report. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff at this time? Council Peralta.
Thank you. Jeff, my request, my recollection is that the city services fee in this cycle actually brought in more money than anticipated by $100,000?
No, we had originally anticipated in the, in the, in the first year, just a little over $2.2 million. It came in about $10,000 less than that. So it was about half a percent low.
Okay.
Any additional questions for staff at this time?
Yes.
Thank you. Is that the end of your report?
Yeah, I just need some consensus from the council on what you'd like to do moving forward.
Councilor Manke.
I am in full support of assessing that or increasing the fee.
Council President.
Yeah, just to clarify, Jeff, you said the 2.1% CPI is already baked into the budget from a January 1 collection or?
We actually budgeted 3%. So a 2.1% is what the CPI is now. So with a CPI increase, we'll see about, assuming the projections continue as collected so far, would be about $12,700 under budget for the current fiscal year.
If council forewent the CPI, we would need to fill a hole of?
$38,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Geary.
I'm, I'm comfortable with as proposed at the 2.1%.
Any additional comments?
I'm as well.
Okay. You have enough direction. Yeah, you have the clear direction you need. Thank you. Any additional?
Couple of items to report. I know there's a lot of interest in the police chief process. We have that same interest. We have a preferred candidate. We are in background checks. The background and due diligence for a police chief takes several weeks. We are expecting that that process will be completed the first week of December and we are expecting to be bringing forward an appointment to the council at your December 10th meeting. I will note that I have a procedure tomorrow morning and I'll be out of the office all day, hopefully back to the office on Thursday. And that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Wish you a healthy day tomorrow. City Attorney David Leitenberg?
Nothing from the legal department tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Director Muir?
Nothing additional from me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lofton, are you presenting this evening or are you here for what's on the, are you here for later? Would you like to present?
I'm just here for later.
You're here for later. Ms. Woolridge is the same for you? Same for you. IT Director and interim Finance Director Burke?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing from the IT side tonight, but just to point out, if anybody does have any questions or concerns while I'm at the helm of finance with a lot of really knowledgeable people behind me, feel free to reach out, let me know here, send an email and we'll find you any answers you need. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public Works Director Hunsaker.
Yeah, just a couple tonight. First, the weather is really cooperating with our annual leaf pickup. So if you were looking for information on the leaf pickup, just a reminder on the city webpage, there's a nice link to the leaf program where you can see the schedule and a map and when they'll be in. Your Public Works team will be out in the neighborhood picking up leaves. The second one I had, so later in the consent agenda, we have a lease agreement for the Nimbus Loop Building, the old Comcast Building. Contained within that staff report is a brokerage agreement. We used a broker to help find the tenant. The term of that agreement did end on May 31st, but the broker found the tenant on April 29th. And that agreement contains two provisions for 90-day extensions that we have met since we're going forward with the lease. So we're getting it in under the wire, but that, just wanted to point that out, that, that provisions in that agreement allow that brokerage agreement to move forward as well.
Thank you. And Councilor Payne, do you have any additional questions on this item before we, before we move forward?
Thank you for asking. No, Jeff, Jeff and David were all very quick in answering my questions, which were related to the term of the contract and its expiration. I do want to say, to make sure that there are many of our committees that are looking for committee, new committee members. So community, please apply.
Thank you so much. Community Development Director Richards?
Yes. So to follow up on Councilor Payne's announcement just now, we have many committees that we are actively recruiting for. The Planning Commission, the Historic Landmarks Committee, our Landscape Review Committee, our Urban Renewal Committee, our Budget Committee. I encourage people to apply. This is the place where you can make meaningful impact on what happens in the community and how we serve our community. If you're interested... If you're interested in applying, you can find information online at the city website, also at iHeartMAC, or feel free to contact me directly.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our Airport Manager Willie Williamson, I assume you're also on here for the agenda, but if you would like to report, sir?
The only thing I have to report for the airport is that we are continuing with the airport master plan, and we are presently looking at chapters four and five. The Public Advisory Committee recently met and has provided additional feedback, and so we're incorporating all of that. And so far, we're pretty close to right on target timewise and looking to have this finished in, oh, probably April next year. So that's going on. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we are, I am representing the airport on the Innovation Center's Advisory Committee, and we are working closely with them to dovetail the airport and with the Innovation Center in any way that we can. So there you have it, and I've got two things later on on the agenda.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. And Vicki Hedges, HR Director, please.
Only thing to report tonight is, as Jeff mentioned, we're moving forward with the police chief process, and then we are also moving forward with the Finance Director process. The application period for that closed yesterday, so we'll start moving forward with interviews in the next couple of weeks.
Great. Thank you. And City Recorder Claudia Sisnaos?
Nothing for the council. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll now move to our consent agenda. Does any counselor wish to have any item removed and heard on the regular agenda? Item D, okay. We will come back to that. With the remaining items, A, B, and C, does any counselor need to recuse themselves for making a decision on the consent agenda? And if I don't see any, then I would entertain a motion to approve the amended consent agenda, which removes item D.
I'll move.
I have a motion from Councilor Mankey, a second from Councilor Peralta. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed say nay. The consent agenda is adopted unanimously. We'll now consider Resolution Number 2024-58, a resolution approving a two-year extension on Jerry Trimble Helicopters Amendment to Lease for the Placement of a Modular Building, which is located at the McMinnville Municipal Airport. Mr. Hunsaker, would you like to take this one?
Actually, I'm going to have Willie speak.
Perfect. All right. Airport Manager, Mr. Williamson, if you will rejoin us. Council President, did you want to lead with a question, or would you like a brief staff report?
I guess for me, it was more just wanted to put on the record that, you know, this initially was set out to be a temporary building, and that JTH has been good partners in the last few years. And I personally support the renewal of this lease. You know, as we would want them to move off from their modular building, they've been good partners in keeping the side of their hangar free for movement for taxiway use, which was a big hang-up with the lease. And so providing they continue to do that, which is called out in the lease agreement, and that the city still doesn't have a FBO building, you know, that's ran out of modulators that our current FBO has provided, I just feel it would be somewhat in a bad light for the city to ask a tenant to move a modular building when we're operating our own FBO out of a modular building. If you wanted to share anything else, Willie?
Yeah, this is an extension of an existing extension. It's a second half of an extension to keep the modular building in place. Recently, there's been a requirement for Jerry Trimble Helicopters to increase their footing on the airport, and over the course of time, the construction of a hangar building or other facilities at the airport has grown dramatically. However, Jerry Trimble Helicopters has expanded their capabilities, moved their office, and added some additional aircraft storage into an adjacent building, thereby expanding their total operation, which is kind of in the spirit of what the agreement was, to keep the modular building. In my opinion, they've actually done everything and more than was absolutely required to get this last two years of an extension. And they are presently using the modular building for an aeronautical activity. They have a couple of flight simulators in the building, and that's very helpful for maintaining, you know, a training protocol, as well as ensuring, you know, emergency procedures are addressed on the ground where it's safer and that type of thing. So I would really like to see this extended. I would appreciate any consideration by city council for this, and I'm open for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions at this time? I will just add a note that Jerry and Allison have been great partners to work with. Our city manager, myself, council president, we've all sat down together multiple times looking at the nuances of this lease and how we can support one of our local businesses, and a local business which brings international economic development to our area. The flight school that Mr. Williamson noted has multiple flight simulators, and if you've been out to the airport and you see the variety of flags that are flying from the building, that represents all of the different nations which their students come from. Without any additional questions, I would entertain a motion to pass Resolution Number 2024-58 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Council Gary, a second from Councilor Mankey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed say nay. And the resolution passes unanimously. Thank you so much. We will now consider Resolution Number 2024-59, a resolution entering into a contract with UNA for a budget and financial transparency software subscription. And I am unclear who is going to present on this. I'm sorry, Mr. Leitenberg? No. Interim Finance Director Burke?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, I'd refer you to the staff report in your packet for some background on this item, prepared by Crystal Waldridge tonight in Finance, and a few others as we all pitch in to fill the shoes of our previous Finance Director. The resolution before you today is regarding entering into a contract for a new budget software package from UNA Solutions. To recap a little bit, this item has been discussed at two previous Budget Committee Work Sessions in April and September 2024. The software implementation dollars are included already in the adopted fiscal year 25 budget, and previous feedback indicated general support for the software discussion as separated from the biannual budget discussion. The software purchase will allow for increased efficiencies in budget preparation, significant process time savings, increased public transparency, and better tools for budget forecasting and budget book preparation. After a multi-departmental RFQ and evaluation process, the software from UNA was clearly identified as the best fit with McMinnville. It also turned out to be the most cost-effective solution of the evaluation process. Based on a few questions in previous work sessions from the Budget Committee about cyber and data security, our team reached out to UNA to sign an NDA to be able to examine their latest SOC 2 audit, which ensures that vendors' cybersecurity practices are indeed secure and protect customer data. So from an IT side, I'm very confident that UNA is following best cybersecurity practices according to industry standards. The staff report and previous presentations outline more detail about the advantage of the new budget software. It would interface with our current New World software. It's a front-end of sorts that would replace the aging technologies that create our current limited-budget reports, and would allow for the creation of an updated budget book with more detailed and well-presented information. It would allow for better budget forecasting and just cut huge amounts of time out of the updates we do to our budget documents between levels, and allow for extra, basically dashboards to explore budget data transparency, both internally and externally. So lastly, just to talk a little bit about logistics and implementation, it's November now. Approving the contract would still allow us to bring some of these tools online during the upcoming budget year. We would still handle the next budget entry process in the current New World software, and then connect the UNA software system together to be able to start generating reports and scenarios, hopefully in the March-April timeframe, assuming everything goes well. Maybe have some dashboards ready for the Budget Committee for spring meetings. In best case, maybe take a shot at creating a budget book with the new software and get all the use we can out of the budget, the software for the next budget cycle. So to wrap it up, council options are to authorize the entering the contract for budget software with UNA, so the team can move forward as soon as possible, or otherwise to continue the status quo budget preparation process with our existing tools and processes. So I'm glad to take a shot at any other questions you have, and back to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. A great serendipity that you are presenting that item tonight, since you will also be the person that's overseeing the implementation of, at post-purchase implementation.
It worked out well, didn't it? Yeah.
Yeah. Any council questions or clarification needed? I have two. I'm going to start with Councilor Chenoweth, and then Council President. Did you also have your hand up? Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. One question I would have is, would we be better served waiting for the new Finance Director, whoever that happens to be, to come in and be in that position by both their knowledge, experience, background, whatever happens to be that they bring to the table, to wait until that person's in the seat, to let them get a feel for whether or not this is really the best product, or maybe they have an idea on what might be a better product?
Yeah, it's a possibility. There's a reality, too, that a search process for a Finance Director could take literally anywhere from three to six months. And the team that we put together kind of included department heads from several different departments, and a Finance Director with five years' direct experience with the McMinnville processes and the challenges we have. So just kind of keeping that all in mind, and the team we put together, and them all being solidly behind it, it seems like a pretty solid choice to us at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Council President? And then we'll go to Councilor Payne after that.
Just to clarify, was this the software that was presented in collaboration with the potential biannual budget, but we're just in the software, not the biannual budget right now?
Correct. Yeah, and the first time we brought this was kind of both of them together, and we got the feedback about trying to separate the two. So what we're talking about is not addressing the biannual piece, but setting up for that discussion, probably using this software to actually budget next year instead of New World. So we have a full year with an implementation, and then from there, we'd move on through to any future biannual budget discussions and be well-placed for that.
Okay. And will this, I mean, we have our current financial statement that comes out quarterly, but will this software allow staff, this might be more of a Crystal question, but allow staff to really show council and citizens like a division-by-division or department-by-department budget, so it calls out finance and IT? And right now, there's still some things that are collaborated together. You know, there's quite a few different things under admin, even though they have their own department heads, per se.
Yeah, to get a little bit more visibility on those things.
Yeah.
And not looking too my right, I will certainly accept any comments from Crystal, who did the report. But as I understand, the dashboarding capabilities, when they're fully been rolled out, they will be available to the public to be able to drill into these kind of items and get a lot more information. That's the transparency piece that we really believe in with this product, too, so.
What I'm understanding is we can build these dashboards pretty detailed or pretty rolled up, and so it's just kind of what information we're looking for, so.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that's obviously up to the future policymakers, but if I had a magic wand, I would like to see it department-by-department, and, you know, what department's spending on consultants or legal fees, or additional staffing, or overtime, and things like that.
Yeah, that's definitely the intent, for sure, is to provide as granular as we can with the software, to give that kind of detail to the public and the transparency.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go to Councilor Payne, please.
Thank you. I want to understand if we're having to choose between municipal court software upgrade and the financial support, or financial software upgrade, or if perhaps UNA can do municipal court functions.
It's not really an either-or, either-or a process, I guess, in that case. The two aren't really paired against each other as budget options. In the UNA process, we didn't take on, we really didn't consider anything regarding the municipal court. That's kind of a completely separate project from this one, so. I don't believe they have any offerings in that area. UNA's kind of more of a, grew out of a data company. So I don't think they have a product like that that would cross over, so, separate projects.
Thank you, Scott. Maybe Jeff, how are you going to address whether we're like the, I guess, the budget piece and planning financially for both of these softwares, and maybe a status update on the municipal court software?
Sure. Thank you, Council Payne. I don't see these as competing for the same resources. I mean, certainly in terms of implementation, it will, some of the work will fall on the same implementation team. We, as the council know, we sought a grant to support the uni-court software and expansion. We're unsuccessful. We're preparing for another shot at that grant cycle this coming year. We've actually gotten access to the other successful grant in Oregon. We're taking a look at how they crafted their proposal to be successful, and we're waiting, I think, still for direct feedback from the granting agency, or maybe we've gotten that. I'm kind of looking across the table. That was, that's been pending, so I don't know if we have that information yet. We'll be looking at, in addition to that, the possibility of supporting the grant through either already programmed spending through the IS software budget, and/or the use of grants, and/or the potential use of former ARPA dollars to bring that forward. So that's still a work in progress.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Mankey?
For some time now, I've said that the Accounting Department deserves some better tools, and this is the tool. This is, can do all sorts of things that, if you read the information that Scott's provided and Crystal, it can do things in real time. You know, you can change things and change the whole budget just by inserting certain things, so you can see how, you know, in planning and things like that, how this changes the budget. So this is really a fabulous opportunity, and decoupling it from the biennial is swell. We still need it. Please, people vote for it.
Any additional questions or clarifying items on this financial software? I'm sorry if this was answered while I stepped out. This will provide the types of reports that Councilor Chenoweth has been asking for? Will this be, will this software be able to supply the types of reports that Councilor Chenoweth has been requesting, is my question?
It will be able to supply a lot more information and reports, and give us the capabilities to design different reports, so I'd be happy to work with Council Chenoweth to figure out, to make sure that we are providing that through the software, and if not, we'll find a different way.
For clarification, there's multiple counselors that have been asking for the specific report we asked for.
Thank you very much. I just want to add my kind of voice to what Kelly is saying, that I, the lift of our Finance Department, and the fact that you're still, you know, we've learned, we were working off Excel spreadsheets, and it's, we're at a point, you know, we should have had software like this a long time ago. We should have moved from Excel a long time ago. So I am very happy to see this in front of us, and thank you for your work on it. I would now ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-59.
I'll move.
Second.
I have a motion from Council President, and a second from Councilor Mankey. All, is there any additional council discussion? Recognizing no further discussion, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed say nay. And the resolution has passed unanimously. Thank you so much. We'll now consider Resolution Number 2024-60, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter in a professional services agreement with Piper Sandler and Company for municipal advisor services. And now I will call on David Leitenberg, our city attorney, to present. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I have very little to present.
Thank you, Mayor. I have very little to present beyond what is in your staff reports. The city has a need of municipal advisor services. We did an informal RFP process, and Piper Sandler was the highest performer in that process. This will be especially important as we move forward with a parks bond, and we are now asking for the ability to enter into that agreement.
Thank you. Council questions and clarifications? I would, go ahead.
I guess just clarifying, will we be incurring any expenses before the future council decides to put this on the ballot?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Yeah.
I'd ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-60.
So moved.
Looks like Parks Director Muir had something she wanted to add.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there something else?
We will have one more opportunity for council discussion, but we can also, I can also, Council Manke, if you'd like to retract your motion.
I'll retract it for now.
Just, let's give Susan a chance to make some clarifying comments.
Yes, let's do that. Thank you.
Apologize for my late response. We did use the contractor PFM. You may remember they, we introduced them at the work session probably about a month ago. We have had some billing related to that, and I do anticipate that we might have some assistance work from them on developing some of the scenarios for how much the cost per thousand might be now that the new tax bills are out. Not much, though.
Okay. Any additional questions or clarifications needed?
But those costs are reimbursable, providing the bond passes to the general fund. Okay.
That's correct. You already passed the resolution that will allow that to happen.
Okay, thank you.
I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-60.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilor Menke, a second from Councilor Geary. Is there any additional council discussion? Not hearing any. I would, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, say nay. And the resolution has passed unanimously. We'll now move to consider the first reading with a possible second reading of Ordinance Number 5150. Does any counselor need to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding this ordinance? We'll now consider the matter of Ordinance Number 5150. Does any counselor object to having the ordinance read by title only? Will our city attorney, David Lightenberg, please read the ordinance by title only?
This is the first reading of Ordinance Number 5150, an ordinance amending McMinnville Municipal Code Title 13, Public Utilities, to make changes to the local limits and defective private sewer lateral program.
Thank you. I would like to call on Jeff Hunsicker, our Public Works Director, to present.
Thank you, Mayor. So, going over some highlights for these recommended code changes. So, these are modifications to four chapters in Title 13, the Public Utilities Chapter of the Municipal Code. The city was recently required to update our local limits program by DEQ after an audit. We've completed that process, gone through the public comment period for that, and those local limits have been approved by DEQ and EPA. But as it's currently written, the local limit values are directly in the code, even though it says that the director has the ability to update them from time to time, which is a little bit in conflict, because I have no ability to update the code. So, with the updated of the local limits, we're actually recommending to pull the actual numbers out of the city code. They will just get updated in time, and we'll keep them on the city website. Then, speaking to the defective private sewer lateral programs, this program's been in effect since 1997. The rebate and penalty amounts have been unchanged since 1997. There's been a significant increase in construction costs since that time, so we're looking to update those amounts to make the program more financially viable, both for the rebates and for the penalties. In addition, we're looking at the penalties being assessed per EDU instead of per property, like it is now. So, this will change the penalties for single-family homes, most of the properties, but it will affect multifamily units that have a lot of equivalent dwelling units, EDUs, going in there. Right now, we're having some issues where it's actually just more cost effective for them to just keep paying a penalty instead of fixing it, so we want to get that rectified. We're also recommending some changes to increase the length of the grace period and the penalty suspension period, so that it gives property owners more time to find contractors. Contractors, this day and age, are harder and harder to find, so we're trying to give property owners more, more grace in finding, finding those contractors to do this work. And lastly, since we're already in these chapters for the code, we have some recommended cleanup items. The first is the definition of the director, refers to the Community Development Director. This is when wastewater was under the Community Development Director, so we're looking to change that to the Public Works Director. In addition, there's a lot of places in the code that refer to decisions by the director, but these are decisions that require engineering discretion, so we're changing the code to say city engineer in those cases. And then finally, just a few definition and abbreviation updates for a couple items. That's it.
Thank you very much. I would ask for a motion to accept the first reading of Ordinance Number 5150 and possibly pass to a second.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion from Councilor Geary and a second from Councilor Peralta. Is there any council discussion at this time? Not hearing any. I would ask those in favor to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those, thank you, and those opposed, say nay. And the motion has passed unanimously. Ordinance Number 5150 passes on its first reading, and I'll now ask the city attorney, David Lightenberg, to read the ordinance again by title only.
This is the second reading of Ordinance Number 5150, an ordinance amending McMinnville Municipal Code Title 13, Public Utilities, to make changes to the local limits and defective private sewer lateral program.
Thank you. I would ask for a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 5150.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilor Geary and a second from Councilor Menke. I would ask the city recorder, Claudius Sisnaos, to poll the council, please.
Councilor Geary?
Aye.
Councilor Menke?
Aye.
Councilor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Councilor Peralta?
Yes.
Councilor Payne?
Aye.
Council President Garvin?
Aye.
Ordinance Number 5150 is adopted unanimously. Thank you. The next two ordinance will be covered under one staff report, but will be voted on separately. First, we'll consider the reading with a possible second reading of Ordinance Number 5151. Does any council member need to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding this ordinance?
I do want to state for, sorry, my mic is doing that. I do want to state for the record that Councilor Payne has logged off. She had family.
Thank you.
To attend to.
Thank you. Was, may, just going back a second here before we dig in, then, had she logged off before? I didn't, I don't know. Did she vote on 5150?
Yes, she voted, and just right before we started this.
Okay, so just, just, I said unanimously, and I should have said that Ordinance Number 5150 is adopted by a vote of six to zero. So, now, ordinance number, thank you for the clarity, ordinance number 5151. I do not see any counselors recusing themselves, and does any counselor object to having the ordinance read by title only? Okay, then, will our city attorney, David Lightenberg, please read the ordinance by title only?
This is the first reading of Ordinance Number 5151, an ordinance approving the cable franchise between the City of McMinnville and Comcast of Oregon II, Inc.
Thank you. And would you like to present, sir?
I am very happy to, but all of my presentation will be to turn over the floor to our outside counsel, Nancy Werner, to give you some of the highlights of the agreement that we have now come to.
Thank you. Welcome. Nice to see you. Welcome back.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Nice to see you as well. Good evening, council. I will try to go through this quickly, because the memo and the staff report in the packet goes through a variety of the issues that we worked through in the negotiation with Comcast. We've also talked about this several times over the last couple of years that we have been negotiating with Comcast. I think it's been a longer process than we'd hoped it would be, but I think the agreement that we have reached, that Comcast has indicated it will accept, is a much better agreement than the existing or the expired franchise agreement with Comcast. So, just very high-level overview, the cable franchise agreement is required under federal law for Comcast to be able to provide cable television service in the city. And so, we've been working, as I said, for a couple of years to reach an agreement on a new franchise. And just to highlight a few of the improvements I think we've made in this agreement, they really are at the highest level. What we were looking to do, and what I think we succeeded in doing, is preserve the city's authority, meaning your authority to regulate the cable services to the extent permitted under the Cable Act, as well as non-cable services to the extent you can under federal law, which is fairly limited at the moment, but that still will be preserved over the 10-year franchise term. We also want to make sure we're protecting the city from risk, financial risk related to Comcast. We've got very good protections in there in terms of indemnification, insurance, those types of things. And we also want to ensure that the franchise protects the public and preserves and advances the public interest. And I think we've managed to do well on all of those. Just a few highlights of some of the improvements. One, one of the priorities for this renewal was to have Comcast follow the right-of-way requirements in Chapter 3.18, which is the kind of related item that's on the agenda for tonight. That is a provision of the code that addresses use of the rights-of-way by telecommunications providers, and we wanted to make sure Comcast was following the same right-of-way rules as other communications providers operating in the city, just to keep it kind of on a level playing field and also make it easier for the city to enforce. We were able to get that into the agreement. As the staff report mentioned, we do want to do a clarification to Chapter 3.18, because Comcast would not agree to language in the franchise that we thought would be. I hope clarify that they were going to comply with that, even though they're a cable company and not a telecommunications company under federal law. So, that was a big goal that we achieved. The other thing is with franchise fees, under the Cable Act, the Federal Cable Act, the most you can get from Comcast in terms of franchise fees, which is their compensation to the city for use of the rights-of-way, is 5% of Comcast's gross revenue from the provision of cable service. So, we negotiated a new definition of gross revenues, which really just preserves what Comcast had been paying under the prior franchise, but which had some exclusions in it that didn't need to be there, and we've gotten rid of those exclusions to preserve the way Comcast had been paying. And then finally, I want to mention for PEG, the Public Education Government Access Channel, which is McMinnville Community Media, serves that role for the city. We were able to get a change in the money, the monetary support that Comcast will provide for MCM for capital needs, capital costs. They had been paying $1 per subscriber per month. With subscriber declines, that was really rapidly dropping off, and we were able to change that to 1.5% of their gross revenues, which will be in addition to the 5% franchise fee I just mentioned, that will go to MCM for their capital needs, and we really think that's going to be a much more sustainable amount of revenue and higher amount of revenue to help them meet their needs more than they have been able to. So, again, there's more in the packet on some of the other improvements that we made and changes that we made in the agreement. If there's any questions, or if anyone would like me to discuss any of those, please let me know. Otherwise, I will pause here.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I think, one second, we're going to, I lost my exact place in where we are, so give me one moment. I don't remember if we did a motion to approve the, to move us before we go into council discussion. I'm sorry, I just lost, lost where we were in the steps.
We have not done a motion or a second.
Okay.
If you wanted to ask clarification questions before doing that, that would be appropriate, or we could do that and then move to a discussion.
Okay, great. Council President?
Yeah, thank you for your work on this, Nancy. I know it's been a long road. To the PEG revenue, you said it's going to most likely increase for MCM. I didn't see any charts in the packet or in your report as far as what we're currently bringing in and what they project the 1.5 will be. Do you have those numbers handy?
I do not have them handy. I can probably track them down very quickly for you, if you'd like, and I apologize for that. I miss Jennifer already. She would have those numbers, but I can get them for you. They are projections. We do know that subscriber numbers were dropping off, and so when we were, they were paying per subscriber, that revenue was declining, whereas, whereas the actual revenue from cable service was not declining as rapidly. So, by switching to a revenue-based model as opposed to a subscriber-based model, it is going to be more sustainable. But I will try to pull those numbers for you really quickly while we continue the discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional discussion or clarification at this time? I would ask for a motion to accept the first reading of Ordinance Number 5151 and possibly pass to a second reading.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilor Menke and a second from Council President. Any further discussion at this point? Not hearing any further discussion. I would ask those in favor to signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, say nay. And the motion has passed unanimously. Ordinance Number 5151 passes on its first reading. I'll now ask the city attorney to read the ordinance again by title only.
This is the second reading of Ordinance Number 5151, an ordinance approving the cable franchise between the City of McMinnville and Comcast of Oregon II, Inc.
Thank you. I would now ask for a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 5151.
So moved.
Moved.
I have.
I heard me.
I have a motion from Councilor Geary and a second from Councilor Peralta.
Okay.
Okay. And I would ask Claudius Sisnaos, our city recorder, to poll the council.
Councilor Geary?
Aye.
Councilor Menke?
Aye.
Councilor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Councilor Peralta?
Aye.
And Council President Garvin.
Aye.
And the ordinance passes five to zero. Everybody is very excited about cable. Yeah. Franchise, no? Okay. We'll now consider the first reading with a possible second reading of Ordinance Number 5152. Does any council member need to declare an actual potential, actual or potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding this ordinance? Will the city attorney, David Lightenberg, please read the ordinance by title only?
This is the first reading of Ordinance Number 5152, an ordinance amending McMinnville Municipal Code Section 3.18.530 to clarify applicability of telecommunications infrastructure requirements to cable operators.
Thank you. And would you present as well, sir?
Yes. If there are any additional questions for Nancy, that would be fine, but as she said, this particular provision was a minor cleanup, so that we can clarify that the provisions of this section will apply to Comcast under this agreement.
Thank you. I would ask for a motion to accept the first reading of Ordinance Number 5152 and possibly pass it to a second. I have a motion from Councilor Menke.
Second.
And a second from Council President Garvin. All, is there any council discussion at this time?
The only comment was just, I did see, find the number for the telecommunication fund. The total is 190,150, so 5% of that is about just 130,000 to your question here.
Is there any additional discussion? Not hearing any. I would ask those in favor to signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. Ordinance Number 5152 passed on its first reading unanimously. I'll now ask the city attorney, David Lightenberg, to read the ordinance again by title only.
This is the second reading of Ordinance Number 5152, an ordinance amending McMinnville Municipal Code Section 3.18.530 to clarify applicability of telecommunications infrastructure requirements to cable operators.
Thank you. I would ask for a motion to adopt, adopt Ordinance Number 5152.
So moved.
I have a sec, I have a motion from Council President.
Second.
And a second from Councilor Peralta. And a second from Counselor Peralta.
Ooh.
I'd ask the city, well, he had said it very quietly already. I would ask the city recorder, Claudia Sisneros, to poll the council, please.
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
Counselor Menke?
Aye.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Counselor Peralta?
Aye.
Council President Garvin?
Aye.
Excellent. And ordinance Number 5152 is adopted by a vote of five to zero. I'll now adjourn this city council meeting at 8:31 PM.